Okay, I'm calling the regular board meeting of August 20 to order. And this meeting is held on video conference following our examination of the interior of the library. And due to the pandemic, it would be not feasible to have the full board in the library. So now we proceed with roll call. Jennifer, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Sharon?
She's here.
Yeah.
But I don't hear her.
I don't think she hears us.
I'll come back to her. Ms. Christian?
Here.
Mr. Globinger?
Here.
Mr. Parzey?
Here.
Ms. Hsu?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Bernstein?
Sharon? Can you hear us? Sharon?
I'm trying to chat her.
I don't think she can hear us.
Oh, just raise your hand.
You're muted, Sharon.
You're not on, are you?
Hello?
Oh, there she is.
I'm now on. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, could you say that you're present? Could you please say that you're here, you're present?
Present.
Thank you.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes, I'm here, thank you. Okay. Is there any item on the consent agenda that should be removed going once? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Sharon. Second. Thank you, Maura. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yeah.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Hsu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes, thank you very much. Public comments, is there any public, Brody? I can hear.
Sorry, you're muted.
Sorry, we have no public comments in the chat at this time.
Oh, we are back to normal then. We never had public before, so what should we change now? Kate, please, you'll be on vacation, but you have something else to add to that?
Just that I am going to be on vacation, August 30th to September 4th. My husband and I are still hoping, because it's not on the list yet, to go to Michigan, but if not, then I'll just be chilling at home or somewhere in Illinois. But I will be unavailable during that time. And that's really the only thing I had to report unless anyone has any questions on my report.
Thank you. We go to unfinished business, construction project update discussion, boiler ventilation number one.
So I can talk to all of those. We're working through some issues with color design, mechanical concepts, and Siemens. The project will be completed prior to the start of the heating season, so that project is still open. In regards to the exterior facade project, the project is complete and Ms. Janey has provided before and after pictures as requested. And then the study room, penthouse project, this project is complete and the study rooms are being used by patrons when the building is open. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, the contractors on all the projects were very thankful for being awarded the work during the quarantine period, and they've all expressed their gratitude by sending letters to the board, which were included in the packet this month.
Yes, and I think that the whole board is very happy that we can provide some opportunity for work at this time for some of the workers, so that they are not idle during this period. Let's go to the reopening plan update, please.
Sure, so as you know, we have been open exactly a month as of today. We opened on July 20th, as I reported in the packet. It has been slow. Our curbside pickup still is huge, and a lot of people are still using that, which is great, but our in-patron usage is definitely a lot lower. We haven't really had any issues with people wearing masks. You know, we thought we were going to have to be giving away a lot of masks, and that has not been the case, which is great. People are coming prepared with their masks on and practicing appropriate social distancing. In general, patrons are just really grateful. I've worked outside just monitoring the door to make sure people are wearing masks a number of hours since we've opened, and so many people coming in are like, "Thank you so much, it's so great to have you open," and, you know, "We really appreciate everything the library is doing," which I think you can see reflected in the patron comments. So that has been great. And I'm happy to answer any detailed questions you have about like what we've been doing with the reopening or any of the services we're offering. We're planning to keep things as they are. We don't have any plans to make any big changes to like, "Oh, we're going to start, you know, doing in-person programming or letting more people in." We feel like things are going really good now. We want to see how it goes with the school's reopening, because that could potentially impact the entire community, right, depending on how it goes. So we're going to just keep a steady course and hope that all of our safety precautions pay off.
Sharon, unmute yourself.
Kate, I did the book pickup, and I have to say that just it's such a seamless process of getting your book, you get a text when it's ready. I mean, I'm sure we've all done it, but interestingly, it's like a little bit, you know, it's not very crowded, so you can pull in, and the people that were there, they just stopped and got out of their car, and people were getting out of their car. About the winter, though, are you going to still have that book pickup? Because those, I mean, it's under an awning and it'll be cold, but I thought it was just really, like, it took me less time than when I go into the library.
Right, to pick up your holds, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it was great. It was really, thank you. Is that a lot of work to put those bags together?
So much work, so much work.
It's that, yeah.
I'm not going to lie, it's a lot. It probably takes us four or five times longer than normal holds, because we're pulling the items when it becomes available, right, when it says that someone wants it. Then we have to trap it, which means let the patron know that it's ready for them to pick up. Then we have to wait for them to schedule the curbside, which is fine, but then once it's scheduled, then, so then we'd have it like on our temporary hold shelves. After it's on the temporary hold shelf and we know that it's ready to go, we have to look up in our Communico system, which is our scheduling system that we use for scheduling curbside, to say, "Okay, who's picking up tomorrow at this time? Pull the items, check all of them out, properly prepare them, staple the, you know, sheet on the cover." And then we're using Civic as a staging area, so Civic then has everything ready for the next day, so that the staff then can take it and put it out when it's time. So it does.
Great job. It seemed like a lot of work.
Yeah, but it's, it's worth it, and the patrons really appreciate it. And I will be sure to pass on your appreciation to the circulation staff. They work really hard to make it an easy process for the patrons.
I've heard multiple comments as well, positive comments. So I mean, everybody talks about how great it is. Do you have a lot of cases of mistaken identity? Because I have heard of one of those. Because it's like the first initial and the last name, right?
Correct, and that's, that's to protect patron privacy, right? We don't want to put the full name on there. But as far as I'm aware, there has only been one or two, so I don't think, and that was like early days, you know, when people still were like, "How does this all work?" So, yeah, and then we were worried, like, are people going to just take them and run? We've had no cases of items going missing.
Good.
So, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Just, Kate, just a quick question about the limited hours. Any confusion about the limited hours, especially on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, 4 to 8? Are people, is there any signage up at the entrance so people know? I mean, I know it's on the website, but I'm just curious if people come up in the morning and they realize, "Oh, the library's not open."
Yeah, absolutely. So we do have our hours sign that lists the current hours right on the doors, so it is pretty prominent. I did actually talk to a woman yesterday, and she's like, "I keep forgetting that you're not open at 9:00 on Tuesdays." And she's like, "I have to, it's Monday and Thursday and Friday, and I just keep forgetting." And she knew, it just was like, you know, you get into the habit. So, and people seem really appreciative to have different hours available to them. We find that the Monday and Thursday mornings, we get a lot of senior citizens, especially during that first hour when it's open to the vulnerable populations, which is great. They really appreciate being able to go first in first thing when everything is still really clean and, not that I get, we clean a lot throughout the day, but like, the cleaning crew does like the deep clean each evening, right? So, yeah, nothing that I've had. I don't know, Brody, have you heard anything in the feedback email?
No, I haven't. You know, I think it's kind of more just that awareness spreading of that, you know, we have reopened, that we do have kind of the adjusted hours. But, yeah, no, in general, I think people have been, it's been fairly clear. We're seeing, I think what Kate mentioned, kind of a good, healthy, what we consider to be a healthy amount of people showing up, the right amount of people. So, yeah, I think so far, so good.
Yeah, we talked with Kate about increasing the PR effort, so that everybody knows that we are open. My next door neighbor just asked me, "Are you guys open?" And I said, "Obviously we are, why didn't you know?" And so we need to figure out people that are not on computers, that are not looking at our website, those are the people that read paper, remember them? So we need to try to target them. And I think that you mentioned that it's going to be on the Village Newsletter also scheduled.
Our newsletter is being mailed out now, so we know that that's our biggest marketing campaign, like, that's the thing people read the most, so I, I think that will help, because it talked about our reopening in there. And then, of course, we have the very large banner right on Peter on the railing that says "Open," but people have to drive by the library to see that, so.
Yeah, we should try to be on every, everything that reaches the public, the Village Newsletter. I don't know if the Chamber is publishing at this time or not.
And it was listed in the Village and Chamber newsletters, I should mention. It was listed in those. And then Linda also sends press releases to all the local papers. Whether or not they choose to publish things, of course, is up to them.
Well, I'm a firm believer in the Coca-Cola system of advertising. You know, hate them until you hate them. Okay, so, okay, let's go to the RFID, circulation renovation drawings.
Carlos?
Yes?
Do you, do you not want to talk about the FY21 budget analysis?
I thought that we were going to do it later on. It's not there.
The reopening?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
Right, yes, yes. I saw the reopening and I didn't, okay. Anna, do you want to talk about the budget analysis, please?
Sure, so in May, we presented a cash flow analysis based upon the information at that time, which was just basically the budget and property taxes that were received. But now we've updated that cash flow analysis with cash receipts for four months and expenditures for three. So if you go, or if we look at scenario A, we've received 83.6% of our property taxes to date, as of April 11. And if, so scenario A is showing if we don't collect any more additional property taxes and the expenses remain as they were budgeted, at the end of the year, we would have a fund balance of six months. If we go to scenario B, again, we've still collected 83.6% of property taxes. This is showing that we wouldn't collect any additional property taxes, and we would reduce budgeted expenses by 5%, and it shows that our fund balance would be 6.8 months, so almost seven months. Scenario C says that we would, we would collect an additional 5% of property taxes throughout the remainder of the year, and expenses would remain as we had budgeted, and the fund balance would be 6.7 months, so almost seven months, almost seven months. And then scenario D, we're showing an additional 5% of property taxes with a 5% budget reduction, and the fund balance would be seven and a half months. So all in all, you know, the library, the library's financial position appears to be stable, and we can continue on with our initiatives and our projects as we had budgeted. But one other thing that I wanted to mention was, the property taxes shown in all of these scenarios were as of August 11, and I looked to see what had been received through today, and we received an additional 3.5% of property tax revenue. So we're kind of in line with scenario C, that we've almost received, almost addition, you know, we've received an additional 3.5%. So we're close to getting an additional 5% of property tax revenue. And, you know, keep in mind, we still have through October to get the second installment. So I really don't think we're going to have any issues with funding for this fiscal year.
Comments, anybody? If anybody can tell me how this coronavirus fiasco is going to end, then we can choose our options, but at this point, I think that the way we are going, we are, we have six months reserves, and I don't see that that's going to be diluted anymore. Am I correct, Anna?
Yeah, correct. I do not see us going below a six, a six-month fund balance.
Okay.
I do have a question about, this is, hopefully not in the wrong place that I'm asking this. How much is this, how much is this costing the library? The shutdown with the extra cleaning and the procedures? Or is it kind of a wash because you don't have expenses because of programming them?
It's a wash, Maura. I mean, we haven't really, like, we haven't, if you look at the three months of expenses, like, we haven't come close to, you know, I mean, it's right there. We haven't spent more, none of our lines are over budget, you know, due to COVID expenses. You know, we're buying less paper, but now we're buying more wipes and we're buying, you know.
More alcohol.
Yeah, more wipes, more hand sanitizer, more gloves, but we're not buying other types of expenses, so.
Kate, you want to say something?
I just want to be clear that the alcohol that we're buying is in the hand sanitizer?
What about the bottle of scotch that you bought?
No, not funny, Carlos.
Staff have been instructed not to drink the hand sanitizer, too.
Okay, we continue then. Thank you, Anna, thank you, Maura. Let's go to the RFID, circulation renovation drawings, presentation and review discussion. Go ahead, Kate.
Okay, give me one second to close the right thing and open the other thing. Okay, and now my computer doesn't, just being challenging. Okay, so I just wanted to go through this. I know it was in your packet, but just to kind of recap what I shared, because I know it was a lot of information. So I think it's important for you, for the board to understand kind of what this, how long we've been talking about this and what you guys have already decided. So essentially, you voted three times on this project, the first being last August, when you voted to approve the facility plan, which included, of course, this upcoming project. And then in September, when you voted on the $4 million bond. And then again, this March, when we, when the board approved the FY21 budget, which included the operating budget as well as the capital budget, which included this project. Which isn't to say that we can't change that, but just to kind of give you a sense of what you have weighed in on already, already. And so I thought it was important to note that we've already completed a number of projects in the last year that were on the facility plan. As you can see from the list here, a number of them came in below budget. We also have the project costs here, which these were based on doing each project separately, which is the original information that was included in your board packet. I did not update this based on the information that Sean provided us that I sent out last night, which would mean doing all three parts of the project together, namely the lobby and workroom, the staff lounge, and the bathroom. So overall, since we started the facility plan in August of 2019, based on the estimated cost, we have been under by almost $350,000, which is great. As you can see, there are a few areas where it is a little higher, pointing out the two in red. Those items are not yet bid on. The other projects are actual costs. We still would need to get bids, and those bids typically come in below. Just to remind everyone what the marketplace is about, that was going to be on the second floor, and it was going to have all of our new and popular materials to make it easier to browse. After doing a lot of research in the community with what the patrons wanted, we recognized that what they really wanted was to have more browsing on the first floor, which is why the construction plans now reflect that. So we reduced the size of the marketplace budget, assuming that we would have, that we would use some of that money that originally was going to go to the second floor in the first floor lobby, because that is what the patrons were interested in, was having more browsing, which we originally, which wasn't in the original master plan for the lobby. I know there have been a number of questions on the bond, so again, in September of 2019, the board approved a $4 million, $10,000 bond, which was to cover projects for this fiscal year and next fiscal year. We cannot return the bond, so that money that we have has to not only be spent on capital projects, but we're not allowed to give it back until at least seven years after the bond was issued. And even at that point, we would still need to pay off the full bond with the interest. So, and then I just put in some pros and cons. I won't read through all of these, but I will just say that I feel that it is a challenging time right now, without a doubt, but I still feel that we should move forward with the project in the timeline that we have laid out. It's going to allow us to take advantage of the lower occupancy that we're experiencing for a reasonable cost with the least disruption to patrons, but it's going to set us up for longer-term success in terms of what, how patrons are using the lobby both now and in the future. And even with social distancing, as you'll see in the updated plans that were included in your packet and that Tiffany and Dan will go over, the lobby is much more flexible. And if this pandemic and safety measures continue for years and years, we're going to easily be able to adapt the lobby to be the safest it can possibly be, whereas right now, we're limited in a lot of different ways. So I just wanted to give you some background information, and would be happy to answer any questions on any piece of that.
Okay, before I open it for questions, let me give you a couple of caveats. The fact that it was voted by the board before doesn't mean that we cannot vote again and eliminate whatever we want to eliminate. That's number one. Number two, let me just, number two, if we decided to eliminate part of the project, we can use the money for something else. So we can use the $4 million that we borrowed, we don't have to return it, but we can move it to something that is more important for the community. Now, any comments on the budget?
So I'm confused. What, what, so according to Kate, the money has to be used for capital projects, we can't return the money, but you're saying we can use the money for other purposes? So what, what is?
No, no, it can be used for another capital project. It doesn't have to be specific for the one that we.
Another capital project, such as?
We don't know yet.
Can you give me an example? Like, what would that be?
Modifying the third floor for something else, or modifying the first floor for something else. We don't know what's, what's in the future, and I won't be on the board to decide those things either, so. But let's talk about RFID now. Anybody on the board wants to comment on, I'm sorry, on the circulation and all the renovations that we are doing? Maura?
Before I do, Kate, did you want to say something to clarify before I moved ahead?
Yeah, thanks, Maura. I just wanted to clarify that we do have the facility plan that the board has looked at now, and it's also in the board portal that lays out seven additional years of projects throughout the building, and then 20 years of like maintenance projects. So we certainly, as Carlos said, do have other capital projects. None of those would be ready to go next year, though, because we haven't done any prep work on any of those other projects.
Well, we can make them go next year if necessary. We have to spend the money, and whatever capital plans we have, we can change. This board can change what other boards decided. Maura, please.
So if we were looking at a menu of things and saying that we want to move through forward with one and four and seven, I think we should look at it that way of what we would want to do from that, that list of items, keeping in mind that we have already done 90% of the legwork and the prep work for the lobby, the RFID, and the staff room. And I think that it behooves the library to move forward with those now, because if we lose time, it's more likely that the library is going to be up and running, or more up and running, when we're ready to move forward with those. I mean, it would be aggressive to think that we could go forward with a, say that, I think there's a third floor staff area that's possibly on the board, but to get that ready to go would be a minimum of six months, I would think. So we lose that time where the library is, reduce staff, reduce patrons, reduce programming, and I think we should take advantage of that, because I think that we might be able to get, and this might be wishful thinking, but we might be able to get better pricing to do it now, because it's easier for the contractors to be in there when there isn't as much going on. It's safer for them, for them and the patrons, when there's not as much overlap. So I think that even if we were looking at this and saying, "Let's do, you know, let's do the third floor if all things be, if we hadn't done the prep work," I think it also makes sense to do the thing that's the most public, because that's going to be the one that's going to be impacted by not having people in the building.
Like the lobby.
The lobby. And I think there's a lot to be said about investing in the RFID that is going to make the lobby safer for the patrons and especially for the staff as well.
I mean, that's the key word, is investing, right? I mean, that's the way, look at this, is an investment for not just cosmetic improvements, but truly investing in the way libraries are going to have to function for years to come, because this is not going to be the last pandemic we're going to be facing. There's going to be other pandemics. So I, I mean, my view is if it's truly investment to make libraries more functional for the next 10, 15, 20 years, that's what we should be looking at.
I just wanted to comment, Jay had his hand up.
Jay?
Yeah, I thought Maura made a really interesting point about hopefully that the cost would be down. With Sean and Laura present, I would be curious if they could give us some of their experience right now and how the bids are coming in on other projects they're working on relative to projections?
Absolutely. Yeah, so, you know, as more.
Yeah. So, you know, as Maura mentioned, you know, due to COVID, there has been a slowdown in a lot of projects and a lot of subcontractors are looking for work. So putting this out to the street now, you will get the best bang for your buck. The subcontractors are hungry for work. And, you know, if you're, as I mentioned in the last, the last board meeting, is that when you're combining these projects together, you are getting the most bang for your buck. We'll run it all concurrently. There will be less staff and patrons involved that we'll have to work around. So I do think that now is the best time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think that this, Kate already touched on this, but the, one of the items that really resonated with me is the fact that we're providing a project that will provide jobs for, for people. And I think that's a significant issue that shouldn't be dismissed.
Okay, anybody else?
So I have a question. So I think Maura and Kate made good points. What would be like the communication plan to the patrons? Because as they both mentioned, I mean, there are some good points in here about this is an investment, this is for the next 15 years. I mean, those are the things that we're looking at as positives. How would we get in front of that or communicate that? I assume that would be part of, you know, how we discuss it with our patrons, right?
Yeah. So we've actually already started that work with the with Janie photo comparison. We're mentioning to the board in the work, in the social media and articles that Linda is preparing, that this is just one of the projects that we do to continue ensuring that the physical building is well maintained and that we're continuing to shape the library to meet the community's needs, but doing it in a cost responsible manner. So we're, we're doing that right now to kind of plant that seed. If, you know, we're moving forward with this project, we would continue planting those seeds so that we're not just like doing an info dump on people, but instead crafting a narrative that the library and the library board cares about the long-term needs of the library and cares about what the community needs and is looking at not only what is happening in the world right now, but is looking to ensure that we're well positioned for the future. So we've already kind of mocked up some additional things that we'll be doing if this moves forward and we'll continue building on that narrative with each project that we do. You may recall when we were doing the exterior facade, I think that that was like our most liked social media post for that month. People are interested and they are engaged when we talk to them about this, which is anytime we're doing these projects. And I think we have a really good track record of, of communicating to the community the value of the construction projects we're doing and why they're needed. And, and most importantly, how, how we're being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and how we are making the library more user friendly and more usable for them.
Any comments? Okay, I have a question for Sean. Where are we? How can, I don't know how to phrase it. We are spending $295,000 on a room and two bathrooms with our showers. I think $38,000 to renovate a bathroom without a shower is a little bit excessive. Especially since the water is already there and electricity is already there. To spend $200,000 for one room with a couple of drywall partitions, it's, I can build a house for that kind of money.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
We are not even putting a new roof there. Go ahead, Sean.
I get it.
You're smiling. You totally were expecting this one from me, so go ahead.
Totally understandable. You know, Carlos, you know, just to put this into perspective, this is just strictly a budget. You know, the numbers will come in lower. By how much? We're unsure. But again, you know, putting it on the street now is the best way to do it. The way that we were planning on presenting it is, is bidding it out as having the RFID and the, the staff workroom and the, and the lobby renovations all kind of as a base bid. And then the subcontractors will provide an alternate for the renovations in the, in the lounge, in the restrooms and the hallways, kind of giving you that menu that you were speaking of. And then you can make that decision then. But ultimately, if we are combining the projects together, it makes the most sense from.
Oh, I, I'm not, don't, I'm not intending in stopping this in any way, shape or form. What I'm saying is how can we budget this high and expect to get it at this low? Unless you're going to look good, the bigger the difference, right?
But we're going to look real good, Carlos.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I hope that you look impeccable. Because $10,000 and $77,000 is not something that I would pay for anything. And I'm speaking from the citizen's pocket now. I am a taxpayer in here like everybody else. And, you know, I don't think that our board members would spend that kind of money in their own houses. Maura, would you renovate your kitchen and two bathrooms for $300,000? You're the architect. You're muted. You're muted.
Maura, you're on mute.
You're muted.
You're on mute, Maura.
I would not spend that amount of money, but if I were to renovate my bathrooms and my kitchen, I would make sure I was doing those projects all at once, so I could take advantage of.
No question about it, yes.
Validating my overhead.
No, no, there is no question that we're going to go ahead with this. It's just as I, I want you to sharpen the pencils of all those contractors and subcontractors, Sean, because those are way out of ballpark numbers. Okay, anybody else wants to talk about?
Here's just a quick question. So just looking at these drawings, I mean, it's clearly aesthetically huge improvement over what, I'm just curious, what, what else is there as far as the staff lounge area? Because I mean aesthetically, yes, it's, it's much nicer, but I'm just curious, like function, what's the functionality improvement?
We're creating a wellness room. I think that's the biggest functionality improvement, where we can have nursing mothers, people that are feeling unwell, people that need to have a private conversation. We, in the past, when we've had people that needed to pump, we've had to put them in closets or paper over doors so that they could safely pump. So this is creating that space, which I think is really important. I, I would say that to me is the biggest improvement. Is that something that we can't currently offer?
Okay, I'm seeing that we are doing something that is out of line with what we should, with what the staff needs. This is needed, no question about it. The question is, are we going to make it out of gold? Or are we going to make it out of brick and mortar? Okay, and gold is going up. All right.
I think Jamie had a question.
Yes, Jamie, please.
I just want to, I don't have a problem with this, this project versus other projects going forward. I guess I just want to kind of make sure with the payment of the bond, would that like potentially put us in any risk in this environment in terms of like we have to potentially either miss a payment or, you know, weighing that against other budget cuts of any sort? Would that scenario, how, I guess, how likely is that were to happen?
Jamie, we, we levy for the, the bond payments. And so we have received, you know, for this fiscal year, we've received 80, almost 84% of property taxes through August 11. We always fund the debt service fund at the end of the year to make it whole, so that it never is running in a deficit. So based upon the cash flow analysis, we will not have issues making the bond payment.
Don't we have a reserve for, also for capital improvements? Separated from the regular reserve?
Cap, the capital improvement fund has money to pay. I mean, it's the bond money, but we, we still have to pay the bonds. But we are levying for that and I don't see a problem making those payments.
No. Okay, then unless there is any other objections, we're going for bid next month. And it will be presented to the board probably, Sean? October, September?
Not September.
We were thinking October.
October, okay, that's fine.
Carlos, did you still want Tiffany and Dan to take the board through the updated drawings and renderings?
Sure. Guys, you want to see it or you saw it? Questions? No? Yes? No?
I'd like to hear it.
Okay.
Dan, do you want me to share and you control?
That'd be great.
Okay, let me get it set up then.
Thank you. And Tiffany's computer does weird things on Brody's digital platform. So we're gonna, she's gonna stay muted, but she's gonna jump in whenever needed.
Can you all see the show?
We can.
Okay, and then let me do some fancy business here. Hold on one second. Hoping I'm not flying too close to the sun right now.
Getting close.
Well, while just, oh, here we go. I'm sorry. One second. All right, Dan, you should be able, oh, it's not letting me do it right now. So Dan, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just move it forward when you say you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
And you can actually skip the first slide too.
Okay.
So the second slide, I'm going to go through really quickly. What we, that's okay. So in this plan, you can see what we were discussing at length for the last couple of minutes. So the gray areas in the plan are areas that we are not, have not touched and areas that were part of the last renovation. To the top of the drawing, you can see we're renovating the staff lounge, creating a new wellness room and huddle room. The huddle room is sort of a multipurpose conference room that can be used by HR, can be used by teams. It's really nice that it's office staff lounge. So if they want, if they're in the staff lounge or something comes up, people can discuss things in private. We are creating a, a new office for the circulation manager and then renovating the two staff restrooms, which are located to the north in this drawing. Below that, we have the circulation workroom, which is also receiving all new furniture and the automated sorter. You can see we have the returns that are coming in. It's facing the east entrance. And then the west entrance, we have the holds. We have an OPEC or I'm sorry, a self-check. We have art display along the wall where it currently is on the outside of the auditorium. And then we have the self-checks that are situated as four separate self-checks right now. We're displaying, we're showing them that way in plan due to obvious reasons for the virus. But we have designed them in a way that if at a later date, the staff wants to either put two of them together or put all four of them together in a tighter configuration, they will have the ability to do that also. The two circ desks, one is facing the self-checks for help. The other is facing the, the main entrance from the east. And really we have reduced the size of those quite drastically. We see them as really touch and go service points. And I think the main focus is to see a face when you walk into the library. And for also for people to help as they're either at the display shelves for books, at the self-checks or at the holds. Okay?
Question?
Yep.
If somebody comes from this side, the one that we see now where the two circulation desks are and looks for a hole,
Yep.
will have to get the hole and come back here to the self-checks?
No, we're gonna, I think we're gonna have a self-check down at that area also. It's just, it's not, it's a mistake.
Yeah, because a lot of people park on, on this side of the building.
No, you're absolutely correct. There'll be a self-check down there.
Okay, all right. That's it.
Okay, so this is the view you see as you walk into the, the lobby from the east. Again, you see the two, the two desks which have the ability to move. We're not planning, the staff is not planning on moving them a lot, but if they do want to move the art pieces of furniture, so at a later date, if they need to be in different positions, they can be. We just have to work out the electrical and the data. And then to your left, you're seeing the self-checks. We're showing them, there's two slides. This first slide shows the acrylic that we plan on putting up as part of the COVID. But we also have a next slide that shows with them down. Another piece of this that Kate was actually referencing earlier is that right now, when you walk in, you don't see many books. But when people, patrons walk into the library now, you can see there's a full wall of featured books that can be, are that are on display as patrons enter the library, which is very different than the library is today. And then you can see that there's a large monitor behind the desks that will show and advertise programs that will be happening within the library. Okay? And then this is the lower screens that you can see over the tops of the subjects.
Sorry.
Is it possibility of having a vertical monitor next to that column so that we can scroll through a continuance of programs and events? We, so far, we never used that screen in the back properly. And I've seen it recently at another library, a vertical monitor that it keeps scrolling continuously all the programs and events and everything, so that if you stand up for a minute, you, you will see the whole thing. I don't know, but we, we never used that TV set on the back properly, in my opinion.
The one behind the desk or the one that's between the desk and the elevators?
The one currently is between the desk and the elevators.
And I think that's a little bit of the, the issue is that currently I think the display is between destinations. I don't think people pause to see it. So I think when people are at the desk now, talking to staff, I think the, the monitor will be their focus behind them. So we can also look at adding a monitor in the other area by the self-checks too. It'll be a little smaller because the curved surface of those columns, they're actually round. So mounting to it is not the easiest thing, but we can definitely take a look if you guys would like us to.
Carlos, we, I, I've moved forward to the next slide. You can see where these posters are. We are having, planning to be able to add digital signage there as well. If we wanted more targeted signage, like you're saying, like a daily schedule or something like that. Because that is a real focal point for when people are going to the elevators and the stairs. So that would be another option as well.
Good.
I have one more question though on that. So right now, the circulation desk, I think when we first did the build out on that first floor, you know, we had to put like things on the floor of stand here, sort of, I see the two circulation desk. But, you know, especially in today's world. So where would the line start? If there were lines for those two circulation desks, how are you going to differentiate like who's in line for what, which circulation desk? And how do you social distance waiting in a line with those two desks like that? Because I think that was a big thing, like even today with the desk, like I never know where to stand. And with two like that, I wouldn't know where the line starts.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the joys of having the self-checks, Sharon, is that we shouldn't have those lines. Because we'll have self-checks throughout the building. So like you might have already checked out on the third floor. Or you'll just walk up to an open self-check here. You'll very rarely be going up to one of the service desks. You might, if you haven't gotten a library card before, but in general, you're going to just be going to one of the open stations and you won't have to wait in a line.
And Sharon, one of the things that's not really represented in the renderings is, we know, we have talked about on the desks themselves having some kind of signage there. So that would possibly kind of differentiate what their purposes are. That's just kind of an idea. We haven't really gone too far with that.
I think, right. Because I wouldn't know what those were, where to stand. And then I would just, I mean, you're right, Kate, there's not going to be, you know, the masses, but I still would feel weird if we were all sort of gathered around those desks trying to figure out what it is, where to stand. Can someone help me use a self-check?
Sharon brings an interesting point. This is not going to be a turnkey overnight operation. It's going to be a transition operation. And in the transition, we will have lines of people asking questions. So we need to think in those terms. I don't know how long the conversion will take and how long will it be by the time that everybody's trained to use the self-check stations. But the worst thing that can happen is that But uh the worst thing that can happen is that we may have lines of people asking, what do I do now?
Yeah, for sure. I think that's a, that's a, that's a valid concern. I know, unfortunately, Erin Seager, our circulation manager, is in the uh in Tindys, but she's not a panelist, so she can't chime in here, but we have talked about different ways we can have staff floating at the self-checks to help people to mitigate that. Um you know, to provide more assistance um at at first. Now, obviously, if we're kind of talking about the pandemic, that could change things. Um the the nice thing is that these machines are are very user-friendly. Um most people, once they get a quick overview, are able to be off and running. Um that's not gonna be everyone, of course, but uh you know, are, from what we've heard from other libraries, usually even the most reluctant users are, become very self-sufficient very quickly, so.
So how long do you think that this process will take?
Uh I I, you know, again, we haven't really planned it all out, but I think for the first, at least, you know, two to three months, I think we were planning on ensuring that there would be dedicated staff to help with uh transactions at those, at those um self-check machines. Again, some of that thinking was pre-pandemic, so we might have to kind of think about how we're gonna do that. But you know, I think we've shown we can be pretty creative with coming up with solutions for how to tackle these kinds of questions.
Oh, this is an egg and chicken question. What comes first, the RFID or the renovation of the of the room? Because if the RFID is first, then we still have the the desks and the people behind the desk with separation so that we can have people say, okay, go to that station, do this, this, and this.
Sure.
And then we, when we do the renovation, but I don't think that that's gonna happen. I think that we would do firstly renovation and then put the RFID machines.
That's correct, yeah, so.
Very serious problem.
Yeah, so the the way it's currently laid out, we plan to do the actual tagging of all the collection uh late in this fall, so October or November. And again, that's pending any uh any issues that come up with the pandemic, of course. So at that point, the collection will be fully tagged, all of our, you know, roughly 250,000 items. Technical services at that point will be trained to tag all new items that we receive. Uh also, circulation will be tagging items that are returned that maybe we didn't catch. So really, by the time we get to the construction, the kind of underlying kind of things we need will already be in place. Uh that way, as soon as the
Good planning.
The construction's done, the equipment is delivered, we get trained, and then we're gonna be up and running.
Okay.
I have a quick question. How often do people today come to the circulation desk doing something other than checking out a book? Any idea?
Or getting a new library card. Um I mean, we've really trained
20th patron, every
Uh I had, no, I wouldn't even, I mean, I would say that most patrons have been well-trained, that circ only does checkouts and check-ins and new cards um and hold pickup, right, which is essentially checkout, that if they need to register for a program, or if they need to um place a hold on something, they have to go to one of the other service desks. Now, we're hoping that by reducing the amount of work that has to be done by the circ clerks to check out items, that we would be able to expand. So if someone came up to one of these desks and said, hey, I wanna register for this program, that they would help them, but right now, that is too challenging to do when there's so many items to check out.
That's awful, thank you.
I I would also add uh quickly more that a lot of those, a lot of those
Take that when you're done.
Oops, sorry. Um a lot of people use the reference desk for what Kate just described, so a lot of people go all the way up to the second floor to ask kind of basic directional questions, and that's where they get their first orientation to the library. So again, we're looking to kind of bring some of those informational transactions down to the first floor and kind of meet people right as they're coming in. Um so.
Thanks.
Any other questions? If not, Dan, would you please continue?
Yes, uh and this will, can you go back for one second, Brody? I'm sorry.
Absolutely, sorry about that.
Uh just so everybody knows, the flooring that we're adding is actually just replicating the existing flooring, the library, the library lobby. On the ceiling is the same, so we're replicating the exact same pictures that are in the lobby now um further over the desk. We are adding the two new light fixtures, and then we have vinyl wall covering, which is the blue. You'll see a side of it later, but the reason for that is durability, so it can be um washed on very easily. Um it's very durable against, um we're contemplating a a large amount of traffic in the lobby, so we want to make sure that all the surfaces in there are easily cleaned. Okay? Um this is the view coming in and looking at the stairs, so we still have a very clear um path to the stairway up to the first floor. Um we have display of both the posters, which is something that staff asked for, and then we have the um digital monitor that's behind the desk.
So there was another monitor, right? Is there, you said that
He said that they were actually looking at adding additional digital signage where those posters are, so maybe it'll be three posters and a digital sign, or two posters and a digital sign, or no posters, and I think he's still working that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um this is the view in from the uh uh west entrance, so the holds are directly to their left, and then we still have the art display wall, which is very popular to the right. Um you can also see a glimpse of the window looking into the um circulation workroom, which is for patrons both old and young to watch the automated sorter work. Okay? Um these are uh quick slides showing the materials, so uh the large slide up to the, or I'm sorry, the large image up to the left, upper left is the um uh vinyl wall covering that we were showing as blue. Um it has a slight gold um pattern to it, but again, we really selected this for durability. Um the paint colors are paint colors that we've used um in our past projects. I think Kate and her staff have done a great job, and Anna have done a great job of kind of making sure that everything has a consistency to it, so we're using those same colors um in this new project. And then if you look at the uh um the wood samples, we have laminate, uh wood laminate, um again, for durability. Um we are using quartz. Uh we use quartz when we want things to last for a very long time, that you get a lot of use, and then the gray laminate for some of the millwork that's behind the desk. Okay? Um this is the Library of Things display shelf. Um we're actually really excited about this. Um this is a real opportunity in the, in the lobby for patrons to see, the slat wall's gonna have um advertisements for programs or advertisements for things that aren't typical, let's say, a fishing rod or an umbrella that can be checked out of the library. And some of those things are gonna be displayed um also in these cabinet-like spaces that we've created. So this is a really a good spot for patrons to always know when they come to the library that within this um display cabinet, there's gonna be things that they can either look to see what uh can be checked out, or things that have occurred in the library. Let's say there's something happening up in the collaboratory that um wants to be on display here, that can be displayed here too. So it's, again, it's really trying to get some of the materials that are either available or produced in a library down into the lobby, so when patrons walk in, it's one of the first things they see. Okay? Um staff lounge. Uh what we've done in here is, uh really, we've created a lot of um of countertop space for uh patron, or I'm sorry, the staff to use. We've also, um we have sort of three areas, three main areas that are in the staff lounge. To the left is the sort of lounge area, so that's gonna be carpeted with um softer seating, and we have sort of a felt divider or a cloth divider between it and the main seating in the staff lounge. It's really a spot for people to kind of sit down and be a little quieter um after or during while they're eating their lunch. Um we have a coffee and vending area, which is at the bottom of the drawing and labeled. Um the idea of this is that if people are coming either out of the stair from the second, the first floor and or from the hallway to the right, that they can actually come in, grab a coffee, grab some vending, and continue on their way. They don't really have to go all the way into the staff lounge and disrupt everybody else if their main goal is to grab something to go. And then in the um, in the uh uh um plan, you can also see that we have two microwaves. Um we have two refrigerators on each end of the plan. Um we have a sink, and we also have a stove that's gonna be a part of the project that was, I'm replacing the one that's there now.
Do we have anything for the stove?
Yes, yeah, it's already there. So this is the existing staff lounge, and as you can see, it's it's a bit ad hoc. Um some of the tables are bigger, and it tends that people either tend to eat in um either by themselves or in bigger groups. So the tables that we're using are smaller, but they can be pushed together to make bigger tables, so it's a little more versatile. Um and then really, there's a lot of upgrade just happening in here, uh upgraded finishes. Um if you go to the next slide, actually. Um so everything in here is, so this is a luxury vinyl tile. Um really, it's a name for vinyl tile, so it it really is the extremely durable product that is extremely frugal. Um all of the cabinetry in here is laminate. It's a wood laminate, so we are not having any custom um finishes and or custom materials for these cabinets. And the appliances are more or less um residential uh grade appliances that uh we are putting into the space. The existing ceiling and lighting are going to stay. Um we have an alternate to look at um replacing the tile, the ceiling tiles, because quite frankly, they're pretty gross. Um but again, we're really trying to make sure that we're spending the dollars responsibly.
Uh do you plan to have a TV set there so that they can see news if there is an event that is happening and?
Uh we currently don't have one in here, but I I don't know if that's something that uh Brody and Seth and Kate wanna look at. Uh if if so, we can, we can figure out where to put them for sure.
I think we wanna keep this a quiet, a quiet peaceful place.
It doesn't have to have sound. But uh
I think, given how much we stare at screens all day, Carlos.
I'm sorry?
Given how much we stare at screens all day, I think it's probably good to not have a, to have a screen-free space. We also surveyed all of the staff and had a committee that worked on what staff were interested in in the space, and that never once came up.
Uh if a plane hits the Twin Towers, would you like to be here or would you like to be in front of a TV set?
I have my phone with me at all times.
Their phones, if that was happening.
That was before smartphones.
Okay. I have to say, going to the fitness center and being bombarded with screens is just, i- it is nice to have a place that's free of screens.
I agree.
In in the design here, is it intentional that there's two refrigerators and two microwaves?
Yes, sir.
There currently is, Jay.
There was a, there was a staff lounge committee that really spent a lot of time um surveying the staff and making sure that they were really reproducing or producing what people asked for. Uh it was invaluable for their input throughout the design process, for sure.
You have a ton of cabinetry here. I mean, this has gotta be like 10 times what's there today, right?
It's not 10 times.
No.
Okay, maybe that, I'm exaggerating, but it looks, it looks like, it looks much, much bigger.
This, there's, the staff
You want for $200,000, Abby?
Well, we're getting our money's worth, I guess, Ben. And I didn't even notice, I didn't even notice the second refrigerator. I was actually gonna ask about that, so I think that's good.
Uh Abby, I'm just gonna, sorry, Mara, just really quickly, uh one of the things, these, I went back to the previous slide, there's these large um closets in the current staff lounge, and we would be losing those large closets, so that's one of the reasons why it does look like there's maybe a little bit more cabinetry, because we were, we have some supplies and things like that in those closets that we needed to find.
Yeah, no, that wasn't a criticism.
Oh, no, no, I just, yeah.
It just looks like you're really like maximizing the law, when you look at the comparison. You never have too many cabinets.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I have a question about materials. Um so in the, in the lobby space, I understand that we're continuing the same flooring material, but where we've got a transitional, transition area, are there more sustainable project, products that we can be looking at, Dan, other than vinyl flooring?
Um
I know that you're, this may run afaz of cost, but I'll let you talk, sorry.
No, I mean, um in terms of durability, durability, I apologize, there is some recycled content to the LVT, um but it's kind of a greenwash, and I would agree with that. Uh other materials that we've looked at in the past in terms of cork, um it can cost a quite a bit more, but um and there is some maintenance issues that we found with cork that it always hasn't um weathered as best or as well as we had hoped it had, and some projects where it gets a ton of attention, it works out fine, and other projects of ours that we've used it, and um it's gotten away from the staff a little bit. Uh it hasn't worked out great. Um we've had a couple of projects recently that um we've actually come to libraries and had to replace like linoleum or something with a linseed oil base that's more sustainable. And um with the amount of traffic that we get in areas like this, we just uh Glenside Library was a, was an example where we had to replace almost half the flooring in the library because the finish had come off linoleum, so um we didn't, we looked at carpet for an area in here. I mean, again, high recycled content for carpeting. I'm trying to think of other materials that we could look at that are kind of responsible for a space like this.
Yeah, the uh linoleum was what I was thinking as well.
Yeah, linoleum, we just, we found that if linoleum has wet foot traffic on it, more than not, it doesn't, it just doesn't do well after between five and 10 years.
Okay.
Which is, it's unfortunate, because it's a beautiful product.
Tile that you're specking.
I would say um probably you'll get tired of it before it would wear out.
And the only good cork is in a bowl.
I would have to say I agree with you on that one, Carlos. There we go.
Go ahead.
The cork always peels up. It looks great, but it
It looks, and when they replace one piece of it, you can see it, it just, it's a beautiful project, product, and Tiffany and I have tried a million different ways around the problem, and and sometimes we've been successful, but it really, it, it takes a lot of attention and maintenance, and it starts to be expensive. Great question, well, thank you. Okay, I think, I think this slide actually shows some of it too, where there's almost no usable cabinetry left or countertop left after all of the appliances are placed on there. And we, um again, there was a really useful uh staff lounge design committee that gave us a ton of information and worked with us really closely to make sure we were designing what they asked for.
I see a toaster and a, and a dishwasher there, am I right?
That's correct. We have a dishwasher also, and the toaster oven will be on the, on the countertop for sure. Okay? Okay? Uh what you're seeing here actually is that felt divider. Um there really are, there, you can think of them almost as curtains, but they're a little more rigid. Um they hang from the ceiling, so if the space wants to be opened up, let's say for Christmas, where they wanna use the entire space, they just come off as hooks and they can be stored. Um but what we're trying to do is just create a little bit of barrier between people that are sitting even more quietly than if they were sitting at the tables and chairs. Um to the left, we have the um coffee bar. Um there's gonna be some equipment on top of the coffee bar, but we have a tile backsplash uh again, for functionality. Um the tile is porcelain, so it's not like we're um going above and beyond, and then storage cabinets below. And again, they've all reviewed this, and then the one window in the um area, we're actually putting the um, if you wanna go to the next slide, Brody?
Oh, sorry, yep, absolutely.
Nope, no sweat. Uh you can see the window to the left here, which is dark. It's kind of funny. Um but this is the area that we're talking about with the more soft seats, uh quieter seating, and uh currently, the library has a lot of of um they're trying out different samples of chairs to see what they like, and then once that process is completed, we'll um put together a furniture order for you. Okay? Um these are the paint colors. Again, uh we're really um kind of sticking with the paint colors that we've used in the past. Uh the felt, you can see what the felt um kind of hanging panel curtains look like there. The cabinets will be of the same material that we're talking about using in the lobby for a laminate, and then uh the backsplashes at the uh kitchen countertop is really just, it's a simple white subway tile. We wanted to keep that simple. And then behind the coffee bar is a darker blue, um that's, we're gonna lay in a herringbone. Okay? Uh These are the staff restrooms. Um what we've done in the staff restrooms is actually, after our last meeting, we decided to actually use the same tile that we have in the lobby. It's quite beautiful, and they actually put that same tile in the toilet rooms that are located off of the um the auditorium. So we're putting that on the floor and on the plumbing wall behind the toilets, and then the rest of the walls will be painted.
Sean, explain to me how that is $38,000.
The tile work or you're talking?
The tile is the same.
So we're, we're tiling the wet wall uh as well as the floors, so I, again, Carlos, it's gonna come in lower, don't worry.
You look like any, a hero, yeah.
Yep.
Keep increasing the budgets. Go ahead. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
I think we're getting close to the end.
Uh that is the last, that was the last slide.
Yep, great. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much, Dan, and Tiffany?
Yep, it's our pleasure.
Anything else on this? No? We're going for the next item, which is our commitment to foster an environment that encourages and promotes anti-racist conversation, programming, and action. Who wants to talk about it? So I'll open my mouth.
You go.
Oh, Mara, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, you can go ahead.
Basically, uh Mara and I talked about this. Basically, Maura and I talked about this, and I think that we are both on the same page. To put highfalutin, garrulous, scripty words on the walls that say that we are fostering an environment that promotes conversations, and we are against discrimination of anybody, including foreigners. I think that that is superfluous, and we need to do a little bit more than that. Words are not what we need. We need some actual devices, programs, books, and things. And I think that the staff is qualified to provide that. Maura, your turn.
I would, I think that the community and the staff need to know that this is a priority for us. We will support the staff's programming direction on this. And to be, and for the, I think it is, to reiterate what Carlos said, we're not just looking to say we're not racist. We want this programming and this action to be actively anti-racist. And to, I think it's also important that it appeal to the range of all of the demographics of Northbrook. Age, background, everything.
One thing that we need to be careful is not to fall trap of political statements. We have a divided population in Northbrook. And if we start using the key words that have been used around in the country, we may have people coming to talk to us in opposition. And so we've got to be very, very careful not to use some of the words that are being thrown around. Like, wait, like, Black Lives Matter. Unfortunately, that is true, but it has been used as a political statement, and we have to be very careful. Kayhan, you have your hand.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I'm president-elect of our professional society, the American Society for Biotics and Humanities. We've been doing this now for a while because we want to... Our organizations, actually, we're prohibited from taking stands on moral or political issues for a variety of reasons. We don't want to appear partisan. But we recently issued a statement about racial injustice and professionalism in our field. It took a long time. We finally issued it, and it's on our website. But we, you know, we are engaged with these EDI efforts. Our board has been for the last couple of years. And this is, you know, this is the way this country's moved. I mean, this is the movement of the country is, as Maura said, it's not just being non-racist, but being anti, being actively anti. And so making these statements, I think, are important. It's the first step. It's not the only step. We have to follow up with substantive action and actionable items, you know? So, I mean, I completely support it, though. I feel like this is something that, you know, libraries across the country are doing. We shouldn't be seen as a laggard or some, you know? I mean, this is just something to me that, you know, we should engage with in a very serious and purposeful way, but beyond just sloganeering or kind of symbolic gestures.
That's what we have the issue with. If we just put symbolic gestures out there, then we are just falling in a trap. Last week, I would mention it tomorrow, was the 55th anniversary of the Watts riots. And there were nothing more terrible than that, with snipers on the rooftops, shooting at the police and things like that. And nobody remembers that. There were statements made, the press was all over the place. The National Guard came, the Army came. Everybody got involved in the Watts riots in 1954, I think, 55? And...
65.
65. Nothing came out of it. So we need to be cautious not to say words that people will forget tomorrow and do something that is practical and that will teach the population. What would we care about? Go ahead, Maura.
I think we have to be careful about avoiding sort of words that are going to appear too political. We can, I think, use these words and invite people to have a civil discussion about them. But I don't think we should be too careful. I think that we want to invite a discussion. I would be interested in this, if this is out of line, Brody and Kate, let me know. But I'd be interested to know what the staff would like to see. Like, if you said, you know, in an ideal world, what would you, what kind of program would you have to sort of, in regard to racism and in regard to equity? What sort of, and start there. Start with a big picture, have a big idea, and then see what's going to be feasible and doable and what we think. I mean, I think that we, you said we have a divided community, and I think that maybe that's where we start. Maybe we start by trying to have a civil discussion with this divided community.
The issue with discussion is twofold. First of all, it's very difficult to convince anybody that has a political idea of the opposite. So we can discuss it, but it's not going to come to fruition in any which shape or form. When I came to the town, the first time I got involved in anything, the president of the village, that time Dick Falcone, came to me and said, "You need to get involved in the civic foundation." And I said, "What's the civic foundation?" And he said, "Well, the civic foundation represents the town. Half of the town is intellectual, and the other half are rednecks." And that description, unfortunately, still there. And neither side have been able to convince the other side.
Well, I would support, again, engaging with an expert. I think you mentioned that here. Is that right, Kate?
That's correct, yes. We haven't hired someone yet, but yes.
That's what our organization, I mean, that's what our professional society did. We, you know, we're composed mostly of academics, and we all think we know what we're talking about when we talk about EDI efforts. And, you know, some of us may, but we realize at the end of the day, you know what? There's experts that know more about this, and so we should probably engage with them and ask them, what do they think about this? And what is a library's function and purpose with regards to these kind of efforts? I think that would be very helpful.
I agree, and I think that, I mean, I just would like to see us engage in a conversation as opposed to, I don't know, it's hard to know what the right thing to say is. So I agree with getting an expert in to help us really craft what that next step would be.
And I really do think that this is a two-step process. There is us looking outward to how we can help the community learn and grow, but it's also about us looking inward and looking at our own practices and seeing where we have systemic racism that is baked into how we operate. I think a really small example, but a powerful example that the catalogers are constantly battling with is subject headings. We don't determine our subject headings. We can create local subject headings, but that is something that has to be kind of talked about, and you have to gain people behind it so that you don't say things like Indians instead of saying Native Americans or Indigenous people. Like, the words we use matter, and the words that are used in the book matter. And just looking at that, as well as just things like hiring practices. Like, you know, what are ways that we could reduce some of our unconscious bias so that we can have more fair hiring practices in the library? And there's a lot of stuff inwardly that I think we need to work on. With all of this, though, I think one of the big challenges is that we have a lot of projects, which is probably my fault, because I'm always excited about things, and I always like to try and do things. And we're also in the middle of a pandemic, right? Which apparently now, according to Kayhan, we're going to be just continually in a pandemic mode, and they're just never going to end, so that was cheerful. But I think that it would be so helpful if the board said, "This is a priority. This is something that we absolutely want you to be spending time and attention on." Because it's very easy, when there's so much on our plates and so much we're trying to accomplish, to be like, "Well, that's hard. We'll just push that off down the road and deal with it later." But I do think that this is critically important. And I think having the board make a statement saying that it is important, that they are going to direct staff to take action and to make this a focus of the work that we are doing, and to engage in those conversations with the community, and to hire someone that can, you know, come in and help us learn together, would be really powerful.
Are you trying to lead the board, Kate?
I am merely trying to give you my take on what is happening. The board can do whatever the board would like, and we will follow the board's direction.
Be careful.
If we were to draft a statement, how... How does that, and this is a question for the board, how do we go about doing something? How do we, A, figure out what we agree on, and then, B, like, how does that, how do you put pen to paper on this?
Right, because I think if you were to ask any of us...
Statement. Are we saying that until now, we have been discriminating, and we have been racist? And now we decided that we're going to make a statement to tell everybody that we are not?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
That's what we're saying, basically.
No, that's not what we're saying at all.
But you're saying, you're saying, "Let's restate what we already do." What's the point?
We don't do. There's a difference, I think this goes back to, Carlos, this goes back to being, I could say, "I'm not racist," that wouldn't be accurate. But a person could say, "They're not racist," but it doesn't mean they are anti-racist. Lots who are working against racism, systemic racism, I think that's what we're saying, that we have to do more. Or at least, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying we...
I don't think that just by speaking up, that means that we're changing our position. I think that's a bit dangerous, because, I mean, we're in a different time than we were six months ago. And so to not speak up because it might look like, well, we've changed our position or something like that, I guess I would err towards being more vocal at this point. And the other thing that I think about is, you know, a library is a prime training ground for these kinds of things, because you have all these young children, and that's when, you know, who knows when all these things are formed? So to kind of be able to integrate that into the entire population within the library, I mean, I think that's what we're trying to do.
I wish I had a crystal ball to look back at all the libraries and all the schools and all the organizations that made statements after Watts and show you that a statement is not what is needed now. What we need now is to put a shelf with books that teach people about the problems that this country has had since the establishment of the country, and to see what progress we have made or not, and let them learn. But, you know, to throw another statement, go ahead, put it out. I don't care, you know? I won't be here.
I think the librarians are already doing this, in some, maybe more subtly than others. There have been times where I've, shortly after the, and I don't mean this to get political, but shortly after the immigration travel ban went into effect, I went into the children's section, and there are displays, and there's, you know, up on the lower shelves. It wasn't a formal display. They're the ones that I think they probably change every couple of days. And every book on those displays, eight or so books, were all children's picture books from Middle Eastern countries. And, you know, some were nonfiction, some were fiction, some were, you know, stories, some had more of a meaning. But, so I think the librarians are doing this. I don't think it's, I don't think we're teaching them to do anything that isn't already...
No, no. What I'm saying, Maura, is that they did it, and they will continue doing it. But they didn't have to say, but they didn't say anything. They just did it.
I was just going to add that, I think, just, Carlos, you know, when you look at this, I mean, first of all, we don't look at things historically in this country. We look at things very ahistorically. And we, I mean, we do have a bad case of amnesia. And so these things are deeply rooted. I mean, like you said, they actually, they go back before the founding of this country. They've been around for hundreds of years. So I think part of it, what's different now compared to the era you're talking about in the 60s is that this is much more of a broader mainstream movement than it was in the 60s. I mean, that now, white, middle-class people are standing up and paying attention that they didn't, in a way, back in the 60s. And that's why you see, for instance, all these signs in white suburban towns like Northbrook that you would have not, you would not have seen that 55 years ago. So it's a very different moment in history in this country than it was 55. And I think libraries, if they're going to be a place that's welcoming and serving a broad constituency, I think they have to take the lead on these kinds of issues.
I will not oppose a statement, and I will endorse whatever you guys decide. I just want you to remember, after I leave the library, that we made this statement many years from now. Go ahead.
And as I said, a statement should be really just the beginning. I mean, hopefully, it's not the end.
How do the rest of the board members feel about a statement as a starting point?
I agree. I think, just like Kayhan said, it's a different time. And if we don't do anything, I think it just feels, to me, as a board member, a little irresponsible. I mean, I don't believe, you know, I know that we're this white suburban enclave, a bubble. So I'm really cautious of how we go about doing it, because then, I think, like Carlos said, I mean, I guess I'm torn, jumping on that bandwagon because it's the thing to do. But I also feel like it's a little bit irresponsible just to stick our head in the sand.
I agree, and I don't want to not do it because it might be procedures, jumping on the bandwagon is kind of how I look at it, too. I just feel that it's genuine. If it comes from a place of authenticity, which I think it does, then that's what we should do.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think, I think if we're doing it for the right reason, then it doesn't matter.
Right.
If we're doing it for, again, for appearances or to appear like, you know, we're just following a trend. Yeah, no, but I think if people are doing it with, which I think people are doing it with sincerity, that's a totally different thing.
I agree, and I think that's maybe, Carlos, what you're worried about. If we don't carry it through, then it looks like it was insincere. But I don't think that any of us have that intention. We want to make sure that this is, again, just the start, like others have said. So I would be in support of it.
I've been fighting causes since I was a teenager.
Can I ask for a quick clarification? Are we talking about a statement from the board to the public? Are we talking about a statement from the board to the staff directing the staff with respect to the types of things the board would like the staff to do?
You're asking me?
That's a great question.
I'm asking Kate.
Oh, okay. I thought you were asking it to kind of the whole board. I mean, my understanding from what everyone has been saying is that it would actually be a little bit of both. It would be a commitment to the public that this is important, and we're going to be focusing on this. And it would also be a directive to the staff saying, "This is important. Work on this, create actionable steps that can move us forward." So I think of it, I think of it as both, if I'm understanding and following what the rest of the board members have been saying.
And Kate, just to follow up, what is leading... And, uh, Kate, just to, um, just to follow up, what what is leadership in live, I mean, like the ALA, what what are they saying as far as what are things that libraries should be doing with regards to this issue of EDI?
There are so many action steps that we could easily just focus on those and have enough to do for the next decade. Like, every single division of ALA has issued guidance. The Illinois Library Association, the rail library system has also started that. They haven't issued specific guidance for individual libraries. They're focusing inward first. So every single step from national to local has been doing stuff. So we have all of that information. The EDI committee, um, has already met, you know, and been talking about that and about how we can incorporate that. But like you've mentioned, Kayhan, we feel like the, one of the first things we really need to do is to find someone who is better versed in this, to help us through this process, to have those difficult conversations.
The the question that I have is, did the ALA made a statement?
Yes.
Can we
And the public library? Sure, I, yeah.
Would you please distribute it to the board? And Kayhan, could you please distribute the statement that your organization put out?
I just emailed it to Kate.
Perfect. I will put
Put them both together and send it to us. And put it on for the agenda for next meeting. With a proposal. Uh, Maura, you wanna work on this? Let's put it for the agenda for next meeting. And we will see the the Kayhan's, uh, one, the one from the ALA, any other one that you may wanna see. Okay, and then, uh, maybe one combined from the the library. Okay?
Carlos, are you looking for a draft statement to be ready to present at the next board meeting? I just want to make sure I have my
That's what I hear you guys want. Am I right? The board, is that what you was, want a statement for the public?
Well, do you guys feel that you can put one together?
I think that's gonna be fairly
I feel like mine would be clumsy at best, but
Yeah, like we would just be approving something that was just presented to us. I'm just thinking it's not a lot, a lot of collaboration there.
And I just wanted to clarify also
How to do it any other way.
That that our organization, again, we have very, um, strict bylaws where we can't make a political statement. So we are allowed so we're, but we are, but we are allowed to issue statements regarding issues of professionalism in our field. So when you read our statement, you'll see it's it's very narrowly tailored to racial injustice in our field specifically with regards to, you know, recruiting new member or recruiting new people into the field. So I I just wanted to mention that, uh, as opposed to like the American Medical Association and the American Public Health, they they issue very broad statements about what's happened over the last few months.
Okay, let's look at some of those.
Carlos, would there be any benefit to having, I know we don't do this very often, but to having a committee meeting of the whole where we could actually brainstorm and workshop this so that the board could collaborate?
Uh,
Or did we want to set it?
We could, but I always I always think about a horse designed by a camel is a horse designed by a committee. We're gonna end up with that. We're gonna spend hours. Why don't you present a couple of, uh, alternatives that other organizations have done? And do a pre-draft and then we will look at that and then we will tell you what we like, what we don't like, or whatever you guys come come out. Yeah, Abby, you wanna say something or you just?
No, I was just moving my light. Sorry.
Okay. Uh, is that okay, guys? Yeah, okay, Kayhan, say this. Sharon, I see your head. Maura.
Can we, what did we just decide? Sorry, I'm
We decided that we're gonna take a look at several statements, uh, Kayhan Organization, the ALA, uh, American Medical Association. No, any, any other organization that you can come up with that you have statements that we can mold into one that will come up from the library to our public. And we will look at it at the next board meeting and then, you know.
And that, Maura and I will work on a draft that we can take from all of those statements that will present, that the board can then
But show us the background. Show us the
Yeah, absolutely. I'll send those out tomorrow.
I just did a quick Google and you probably already know this, but there's many, many libraries that have made statements. So there might be something in there as well. That you wanna pull from.
All right, let's do that. Is that okay? All right, uh, anything else for the next board meeting?
Not for the next morning, but Kate, tomorrow, Jamie and I are gonna meet with you at noon. So where do we come to meet with you?
Just come up to administration.
Okay.
We've already got your tables separated and set.
Um, are we continuing to meet at seven for the next meeting or is this our last seven o'clock meeting?
Is that okay with you?
No, 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 we we can't. Next month has to be seven thirty because we haven't voted on it. We had only voted for July and August. So next month is seven thirty. I'm happy next month if you guys want to change the meeting time again. Moving forward after September to put it back on the agenda to discuss next month, but we can't change it because it's already
Yeah, we can change it. Hold on, hold on.
Carlos, we can't change it because it isn't on the agenda and we'd be violating the Open Meetings Act.
Calm down, Kate. It's okay. Kayhan, would you prefer seven o'clock?
No, no, I was just asking to just to clarify. I didn't know, uh, because I knew, I knew that we we had voted on this, but I couldn't remember if it was just for this.
That's fine. We can have, uh, decide on a committee of the whole two weeks from now and on that day, make a decision to change our next meeting to seven o'clock. You can always go around it, Kate.
If you want to have a meeting in two weeks, yeah, we absolutely can do that.
I'd rather meet at seven thirty than meet again in two weeks to talk about what time we
It's gonna be only a minute meeting. Just say approve seven o'clock and that's it.
I mean, I guess the question is, I mean, are people, uh, is this a better time for folks than than seven thirty?
They won't come anyway. They never come.
Those folks.
No, no, I mean, I mean us. I mean, the board.
The people that actually
The people that are doing the work.
I don't care. We can meet at ten o'clock at night.
I don't care either. I don't care either. So
I say just leave it personally.
Give it at seven thirty then?
But Brody, you always are good about this. Can you just remind us? Because some of us are forgetful. It's not me. I'm asking for a friend.
So it's seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty? Okay. All right.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You were fast. All right, Jennifer, please, broadcast.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yeah.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Globbinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Xu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes, thank you. Good night, everybody. See you next month.
Yeah, bye.